Good afternoon and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners work session. This May 24th of 2022. We have one item on our agenda and it's for our board to discuss a 2024 referendum for Cobb transportation improvements. To kick things off, I'm going to turn things over to our DOT Director Drew Ressler.
Thank you Chairwoman. Good afternoon Chairwoman, Commissioner, Scanning Manager. Excited to be here to talk about mobility referendum and opportunities and options there. As you stated, I am here just to kick it off, to kick it right back to the board. I've got my notebook open, entitled and ready to take a lot of really good notes. But I did want to speak for just a moment about the transportation pressures that the county will feel over the next 30 years. And really I grouped those into population, employment and travel mode. Population, employment and travel mode. That's where we will see change in terms of the transportation system that we have today and the transportation system that we have tomorrow. To start with, a look back and a look forward on population growth. As you all know, and ARC has spoken about this and other groups as well, in the 90s, the county experienced a rapid increase in population. You see there a 35% increase between 1990 and 2000. Since then, that increase has largely leveled off, but it continues in the pattern is looking to continue into the future, into 2040. Going from approximately 724,000 in 2016, we're closer to 750,000 plus, to 870, almost 900,000 in 2040, all the way to 2050 where we anticipate the county to be at or over 1 million residents. So that's population and we see densification of certain areas, but really throughout that chart, if we look over the years, 1990, 2000, 2010, 2020 and throughout, we see primarily along the interstates, but really throughout the deepening of that purple that shows the density of population throughout the county. And then we see employment and I think this is an interesting chart to compare back to population. Again, between 1990 and 2000, we saw a 37% increase in employment within the county. If we compare that to population, it's pretty similar, a 35% between 90 and 2000. But what's interesting is between 2000 and 2010, we actually retracted in terms of the number of jobs, largely in part to the Great Recession. But as we look forward and we look at the opportunities in the county, the business centers, the vibrant business centers within the county, we're seeing opportunity for a 34% growth in employment. Compare that to a 20% growth in population. Both of those really need to be taken together for the final point and that's travel patterns. Here we have a graph now, albeit this is a pre-pandemic, but we see a graph of where Cobb workers live and you see on the left side, workers from all over the metro Atlanta area. And this is not Cobb County employee, government employees. These are employees that are people that come to Cobb County for their employment across all sectors. And then you see where Cobb County residents go to work. And you see that travel patterns don't stop at the river, they don't stop at the county borders, they really go much beyond that. So not only do we have population and employment growth here in the county, but we will also have it in our neighboring counties that will see population growth even greater than ours in Barto, Cherokee and Paulding in particular, where that growth will also come through Cobb County. And here it just shows that as of, and this was 2018, but we saw a little bit more than 60% of jobs occupied by people who live outside. And then here internally, 60% of work trips that begin in Cobb go outside. So we really do have a regional pattern, traffic pattern, and there is a need to think regionally in terms of any investments to address these changes in population, employment and travel patterns. This chart is really, really interesting to traffic engineers, trust me. So, but what it shows, this is our travel time index, where we have an algorithm that looks at all of our major arterials and thoroughfares and determines what the average peak hour speeds are. Then those peak hour speeds, we can turn into a letter grade, A through F. That is not a Cobb County lettering system, that's Institute of Transportation Engineers, that is the level of service. And what those mean is level of service A means there's really no one on the road. You can go at the pace and speed that you feel is safest, but it is up to the driver's decision. F is gridlocked traffic. And anything below C, into C and then below C is getting into very significant and concerning traffic that is creating economic challenges and it's a point at which the growth has exceeded the capacity of the infrastructure. What's really, really interesting about this particular chart is we see between 2000, the late 90s, and then about 2007, a gradual decrease in that level of service. And we were approaching that level of service D. In 2005, the county re-approved the 2005 SPOSS, which had major transportation investments in that, which then moved that further forward. And then of course, we see that that stayed around level of service C. Jumping up to A, just pandemic related, we do anticipate that to come back down to C when we run the final numbers in 2022. But as we see increasing employment, as we see increasing population, if nothing is done to the broader network, to the transportation networks, to the transit network, as we have areas that are more apt to be served by transit, then we will continue to see these numbers move beyond C and then into Es and Fs as in the do-nothing scenario. A little bit of graph showing congestion, areas of bottlenecks, bottlenecked approaches, portion of day congestion and then queue lengths. Really the chart looks very similar throughout. We're seeing major congestion on our primary corridors. And so the question is what tools, what methods, what modes, what investments does the county need to address those? And county staff has the technical resources to serve the board. And so we look to the board for direction and vision on exactly how we begin to tackle the challenges that we face. So unless there are any questions, I will cede my time to the board.
Thank you Drew. We appreciate you giving us an overview or a snapshot of transportation, not only today, but into our future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This work session has had its impetus, I believe, when we met as a board during our retreat and we had a desire to make sure that when we had tough issues for this board to tackle, that we were able to do that collectively and as part of our work session, which would allow the public to hear us address these concerns. And so I appreciate this work session being before us and the opportunity to hear from all commissioners on their take on how we move forward when it comes to a referendum in 2024. To give each commissioner opportunity to speak, I thought we'd just go one by one and I'll start with Commissioner Gambrell. If you can help provide your perspective on this matter and then I'll go to you, Commissioner Richardson into districts three and four.
Okay, thank you. And I know I articulated this to Drew before, you want to know our vision to tackle transit and that comes back down to our DOT department. Our DOT department has done extensive work with our consultants to figure out where our bottlenecks are, where the improvements need to be. I think our staff has done a great job in determining those things and it just comes back to this board determining what we're going to fund, which projects and how. So as far as a bigger vision, I think our DOT has done a great job in laying that out for us. The only thing that I know is a concern for District One because it's been stated in the CTP that, you know, there is going to be no mass transit in District One. And that is, well, let's refine that, District One being West Cobb, because we know District One also encompasses the three cities, which does have transit. But in West Cobb, they are okay with not having mass transit and they don't want mass transit and the CTP reflects that. But the bigger question is, is what is Paulding County going to do? What are the surrounding counties going to do? Because our traffic congestion is coming from Paulding County through Dallas Highway, Macklin Road. A lot of our impacts to slowing down our traffic is Paulding County. I know I've reached out, I haven't been able to get an answer from Paulding, but I'd like to know what they're doing to mitigate traffic. And again, if any of our plans could potentially supplement to what they're doing. And then I know Drew and I had a conversation as far as there was concerns of if we did the 30-year program, could we maintain control of the funds and then contract to MARTA? And Drew has already answered that for me, but if anybody would like to hear that answer, we'll have him come up and answer that again. So I think we've got all the tools in place right now to determine what we're going to do. I think with the new Biden package that was released last year, while we're looking at transit, if affordable housing is another aspect of that, the package that released has very specific criteria that needs to be met in order to qualify for those funds. To look at that as well while we're rolling out the transportation plan, because I know the plans that we've seen right now have the biggest transportation in our South Cobb, Cumberland area. That would also be where we would qualify for the affordable housing funding, but I also know comments have been made, we don't want to keep putting affordable housing in one area. So I think that's something that the board is going to have to look at, is if we're going to do transit, are we okay with doing affordable housing with, under the Biden plan that was come out? And again, I know we're way ahead on that one, but just thinking forward, how are we going to tie that all in and then tying it into the region? That's all my comments.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Awesome. I did put together a little slide presentation to kind of visualize where my brain is a little bit. Certainly I've had a lot of discussion with members of the community around different aspects and wanted to be as prudent as possible with the opportunity that's ahead of us because it is a real opportunity. Commissioner Gambrell brought up quite a few different topics there and we know that there are issues within certain areas of our community and so just being holistic about how we approach them and potentially solve them. So I will not belabor the point and jump right in on this. So I figured I'd just start with kind of District Two's thoughts and the balance that I'm trying to capture here, to embrace and connect the unique characteristics of the Cobb communities and their related needs. It includes fully walkable tourism centers, connecting our CID's, safety in our suburbs with sidewalks, lighting and intersection improvements, enhanced strategic military positioning, increased equitable mobility for our most vulnerable, seniors, youth, transit dependent veterans, regional connectivity for enhanced live-to-work activities, improved work-to-play and live-to-play paths for community and economic development. And the goal is to accomplish these objectives in a manner that is fiscally responsible, scalable and environmentally friendly. And most of all, the goal is to position Cobb County strategically within the metro area to ensure it remains a unique asset and to protect its diversity of community makeup. And you can add in here, basically being prepared for the growth that's coming, the growth that's here and just being mindful of that. Next slide. So high level and some of these are just estimates, they're not concrete in terms of when I get to the climate change impact of the optimized use of resources. But for live, work and play, it's making sure that all of our medical and food deserts are addressed. I think that's really important for all of our communities, community safety in general. And that takes on different forms when we look at our overall comprehensive plan. Economic development, so I know live, work, play is kind of the tagline, but I like to break down what each one represents because they play different roles within our community. So the work-to-play enablement is how we can encourage building that community, fortifying the businesses that are here, increasing that internal investment, making sure that, you know, our businesses can live for a long time. And then live-to-work enablement, and this is making sure that people have access to employment opportunities and can get there in a way that's safe and in a way that's on time. Strategic positioning, so obviously we have a fantastic military base that plays a very vital role within our community. So there are some real advantages to thinking about how we're best positioning our base as well. Preferred location for Georgia events because tourism, period. And then preparing for population growth, so appreciate the statistics that Drew shared earlier regarding some of the maps, the census tracts and what's happening. Optimizing use of resources, this is really the freight impact reduction. I would like to see a long-term solution with regards to freight, but we know that there are major impacts on our roads, especially internally. We have large freight trucks going down small one-lane roads and those are, that's concerning. Federal dollars roadmap, you mentioned the Biden plan, there's the infrastructure bill that got passed, there are all types of opportunities that we can leverage if we show our commitment to investing in our infrastructure. So what does that look like and how can we create the most leverage for the county, for our dollars? ROI generators, this is making sure that the projects we do invest in are projects that have some type of long-term yield or return on investment so that we can actually, it can come back to us and help towards the sustainability of that project. And then low maintenance costs, finding ways to either use different materials or different design to decrease our overall O and M, operation and maintenance costs, and really make sure that our upfront cap is invested in that way. So we're not going for the cheapest upfront, but it may be a little bit more expensive on the front end and it costs a little bit less over time. Climate change impact, because that is very important as well. So carbon reduction, how we look at, these would be some really great outcomes as a result of a comprehensive plan. Reducing stormwater runoff, we know that our county roads contribute to a significant amount of stormwater issues and so really being thoughtful about how we approach all of those different, how we approach that infrastructure. And of course, electric vehicles, we know there's a ton of capital being invested in that side of the house and that could be a way to stretch our dollar even further. District two needs, so these are kind of the eight that it boiled down to when looking across the different communities. Walkable tourism centers, military base connectivity, CID to CID to CID, equity mobility, easy access to activity centers, regional connectivity, or I have here county-to-county connectivity, suburban safety and the arch triangle, because I think it would be a really strategic economic advantage for several communities. And then the next couple of slides, I'm not going to go through everything here, but it just kind of outlines, because this will be made available for the public, but it just kind of outlines what does walkable tourism centers even mean? What are some things that fall under that category? Things like ADA compliance, sidewalks, et cetera. Military base connectivity, I will highlight one aspect here and this is finding opportunities for how we can leverage some of the assets that are already in the county. Certainly been years of discussion around the CSX rail line and all the difficulty around that. So certainly no promises on this, but as a part of an overall vision, it would be an ideal direction to be able to leverage the infrastructure that is there and find ways to create connectivity from Chattanooga to our Dobbin's area and then from Dobbin's to Robbins. And the importance that that would play for not just our jurisdiction, but the regional jurisdictions, southern area, southern part of the state and also our military. We can continue on. Arch triangle, that also lists here. Next slide. We can kind of just skip through most of these, but they're pretty self-explanatory. If you don't know what this CID is, it's just, you know, think of Town Center, Kennesaw area, think of Cumberland CID area, Marietta, for those that are listening. So this is just making sure that there's connectivity amongst those different activity centers. Easy access to activity centers, so these are the smaller ones that are within our different communities. These are grocery stores or small businesses, the shops that are in the area, just making sure that there is ease of access to those locations. I listed out a few in District Two, some of them bigger than others, but it's making sure that the residents that are nearby can access them in a safe way, safe and reliable way. County-to-county activity, obviously huge desires for the airport. I have mentioned in here, high-capacity modalities. Gwinnett for the tech district, we know that we have a thriving community within the district, within District Two specifically, where there are a lot of tech jobs that move out towards the Gwinnett area and so that was called out as well. We've got Midtown, Buckhead, Downtown as other destinations. Suburban safety, this is something that comes up very often. We talk about, there are a lot of traffic issues, there are a lot of intersection safety issues, lighting, crosswalks, making sure that we have studies that are done, whether it be looking at our collector roads. This falls under the suburban safety category and certainly applies to a lot of Cobb County. Next slide. Equity mobility, guys, I'm almost done with this part. Equity mobility, so I've mentioned transit-dependent communities, veterans, seniors and youth. So this really is looking at that last mile of connectivity. How do you get from point to point as well? Activity center shuttles, on-demand, specifically ADA compliance, making sure that we have language availability as well at some of these endpoints. So. Tools to get there, that is really what our conversation is about, but I wanted to outline some of the needs that are within the district, just to set the context here. So this is just a review of the current investment tools available to the county. So we're to some degree debating TSPLOS, which is HB170, it's one of the legislative options referenced and we can do up to one penny, six years. We've got, what I've tried to cover here is to show what could be encapsulated by that particular option, right? So we've got walkable tourism centers, suburban safety and easy access to activity centers can be incorporated into what this could provide for our communities and a portion of equity mobility, really the ADA sidewalk aspect. But beyond that, we're missing out on a significant amount of opportunity. But the pros of going with this, with 170 is that it shows a commitment to investment in our infrastructure, so it increases our overall leverage in the region. It reduces the general fund burden potentially, which is your property taxes, and it can increase our tax base through appropriately designed projects that could increase overall funds flowing into the county from tourism or other activities, business licenses, et cetera. Cons here is that it is limited to improvements on surface transportation. It can only be used for capital investments, so projects. It does not include operational costs and will not improve under-invested infrastructure. As, I'll get to another slide, it shows, you know, we did a lot of CapEx investments over time with lane expansions, et cetera, but it, we didn't necessarily factor in all the maintenance and upkeep costs associated with that, so that's kind of eating up part of our current options as well. So this, as a solution, does accommodate quite a bit and, but it also, you know, there are pros and cons to all of these models. So, next. IMSPLOS, military base connectivity, CID to CID to CID, equity mobility, county-to-county connectivity and arch triangle. So the pros here is it reduces latency and transit options, improves utilization of transit options, which of course has been a conversation because, you know, we wonder, well, how come, well, some people say usage is really high and some say, well, I see buses that don't necessarily have individuals on there. And we know, we do have the data that actually shows that there is utility, but it is true that there's more opportunity for there to be greater utilization and a lot of that has to do with its effectiveness, its reliability, whether or not it's accessible. And so this is an opportunity to do that from a pro standpoint. It can be used to pay not just for the capital improvements, but also the operational costs, so we can factor in both and basically tailor that in. And it does signal a serious commitment to improving overall mobility, which of course increases our leverage with state and federal partners. The cons here is that it's limited to transit investments, which is a significant con. I mean, there are other aspects, as demonstrated, that we want to make sure we incorporate as a part of a comprehensive plan. And the last slide, it's kind of that third option, IMSPLOS plus other, right? So what does that mean? And we can go to the next slide, what does other mean? Because obviously all eight are covered in this IMSPLOS plus other sources, we can go to the next slide. So it's incorporated in the other, well, we have three currently available tools and we have a fourth, which of course was the TSPLOS. So the first one is the current general SPOSS, which is something that's accessible to us today that we can take a look at and see if that can accommodate, you know, if we have the IMSPLOS plus this other. We have other, the other available tools, we have special services districts, we do have quite a few in the county, there are opportunities using that tool in order to accommodate some of these other gaps. We've got revenue above projections and the federal matches, so we know that every now and then with regards to SPOSS, we outperform the expectation and so some of those funds can be redirected. We can also improve our federal match, that can increase our leverage a little bit as well. And then of course, there's a TSPLOS, which I just went over a significant amount of information on, but that of course would be required by referendum, just as the IMSPLOS would be required by referendum. So we have before us several different options. The pros on this, on taking this combined option is that we can save up long-term operational costs against short-term capital investments, because if we do pass an IMSPLOS, like I said, a portion of that can go towards operational costs, so we can actually factor that in, pay for things over time, or know that that money is saved up while we're spending money on some of these capital investments. It also allows a complete vision for Cobb's future, showed the eight different categories with regards to District Two, allows for financial leverage with state and federal funds, because both of them do. And there's a 30-year option with regards to the IMSPLOS, that having the 30-year valuation of ability, some of these transit projects, of course, they are heavier in the upfront costs and they also take a little bit longer to build. So 30 years is kind of a pretty good gauge so that, you know, maybe in 30 years, if we have flying cars, it'll give that board a chance to say, what kind of infrastructure do we need? But they won't have to worry about where the operational costs taken care of for the previous builds that had happened. So it's just a matter of how it's structured. And then the cons on that is that it could potentially put two items on the ballot. It was not our design to structure these legislative options this way. These are state, these are legislative options provided through the state and like I said, there are pros and cons of both. So, next slide. This is just some related information to show our general SPOSS. That dark, that blue just kind of shows you how much goes towards transportation out of our general SPOSS. And yeah, it's a significant amount and a decent portion of that actually goes towards maintenance, the repavements that you see. So there really would have to be a new approach in how we look at all of our funding buckets. And our open questions, you know, which SPOSS or SPOLS if any, and obviously I'm sharing this with the community, how much for the SPOSS pennywise and how long for the SPOSS if IMSPLOS? And my recommendation in general is to move forward with a mobility SPOSS and to look at our buckets that are available to us so that we can be really mindful about the operational expenses, regardless of what route we take. We have to be mindful of that. And it is important that we look at transit because it hasn't been truly funded to get it to the point where it is, it is useful for some, it is not as useful as it needs to be in order to be. to be in order to be used to the extent that it could be used. And that should be the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you taking the amount of time that you did to detail what the interests are for District Two in a rather comprehensive fashion. I'm going to turn things over to you, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Thank you. I too would like to commend Drew and staff on all the hard work. We have been studying this for a long time, quite a few years, since the, well, really before the bills were passed in the legislature a couple of years ago. And we've thrown a lot of ideas and data into this with, from staff and consultants and amongst ourselves. But we can't seem to come to a consensus on what the referendum should look like. So I know we have a couple of years to get that perfected, so to speak. But in our individual meetings, well, first of all, I know that there are some areas where we service now that aren't utilized, and some areas that we service now with transit that may be underutilized. And with the growth, especially around Cumberland and South Cobb and everywhere, really, but certain areas, you know, it may be, we may need to expand in those areas where it's utilized more and the increase in population and ridership. So we've seen several maps for the mobility SLOSS that we've looked at. And really, most of the ones that we have are in the areas that are currently being serviced with some expansion in the Cumberland and South Cobb area, where it's probably needed more than East Cobb or West Cobb. And I think one of the maps that was more or less preferred that we were looking at had a segment of Canton Road, which is in District Three, to connect to Chastain, to KSU and Town Center over in the northern end of Canton, which I think may be a good I have, I really can't support a 30-year tax. I think it's, whether it's a penny or two pennies, I definitely can't support increasing our sales tax to 8%. You know, in the past, all of our SLOSS have been one penny and no more than six years. And I could consider a SLOSS, a mobility SLOSS, the six-year SLOSS that was Senate Bill 170, the capital, I mean, for five years. I could consider that as another SLOSS and maybe even a fractional penny. Because I know our sidewalk funds and our resurfacing that are in the current county SLOSS are not enough dollars to fund everything that we have, requests that we get in infrastructure, intersection improvements, and so forth. So until we know what method we need or is suitable, whether it's BRT, I think rail is definitely out of the question because of the cost involved in the long-term 30 years, I don't think is the way to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank Drew and his team, and also Dr. Jackie, and everyone that has put forth an effort to keep us to task and keeping this in top of mind for all of us. And we've been talking about this for quite some time now. And when we had our board retreat earlier in the year, we had several speakers to speak, but there was something that really resonated with me during the conference or the retreat. And it was the parallel or the comparison of best practices versus emerging practices. And what was shared was that best practices supports the status quo, but it does not promote or enhance the quality of life for Cobb Countyans. However, on the other side of the spectrum, the emerging practices positions the county to mirror the services to the standard of that being the third-largest county in Georgia. So to that end, whatever decision we land on as a board, our decisions on transportation and transit should be contemplated through the lens of a generational investment. How will our decisions today benefit your grandchildren and their children? Much like decisions that have been made over 30 years ago, how are we currently benefiting from those decisions? Now, I will go on record, and Drew, you know this, the 30 years, it gave me heartburn at first, because my thought is, you know, 30 years is a long time. I won't be here. And selfishly, I'll admit, you know, I'm thinking about myself, but there are so many others that will come behind me that will be impacted by my decision. And, Madam Chair, I will call Drew up towards the end, just to kind of explain what that 30-year, what it actually means in terms of collecting for projects and having operational money for the projects. So the overall goal and objection for District Four is, it would be for Cobb County as a whole, is to increase pedestrian safety. Sidewalks, there is an increased desire for sidewalks. With that, pedestrian bridges, as we continue to grow out near the Battery would be a perfect example. We need to have safe ways for people to travel to access these amenities, but at the same time, reduce our commute time and congestion in accessing those amenities. But one in particular, as it relates to District Four, is the pedestrian abridge on the border of Cobb and Douglas, near the FedEx warehouse. There are people in that community that actually walk to work, and it's very unsafe there, but that's just to give you an example. Also, the objective is to enhance the quality of our lives by having greater access to education, employment, and recreation. For a student, and I oftentimes use this example, for a student that lives on Riverside Parkway that attends KSU, it's a two-hour commute to access education. There should be a more direct line to get from South Cobb, not just to KSU, but to Georgia Tech, to GSU, to other locations. Hartsfield Airport is another. On, near Riverside Parkway in the south side of Cobb County, you can access the park, I'm sorry, you can access the airport without even getting on the expressway. And that's part of what makes that area such a gem. You can connect to the airport, that opens up opportunities, employment opportunities, et cetera. Also, access to the regional activity centers, which Commissioner Richardson discussed a short while ago, having access to the Battery, not just for recreation, but for also for employment. I would like to see a bus circulator from the South Cobb area to the Battery. And also to access the regional activity centers, Cumberland, Town Center. I also like to see collaboration, and there's been early conversations and discussions with Douglas County, which borders Cobb County. How can we collaborate with Douglas County to ensure that Cobb Counties have access to Douglas as well for some of those same life-changing benefits, such as employment and education? And also, the last-mile connection, you know? It can be one stretch a mile that can single-handedly change someone's life. And the example that I'm giving is along Riverside Parkway. The last stop on that bus is one mile from employment. How can we fill that gap to change the lives or enhance the lives of people in Cobb County? There was a slide on congestion on some of our major corridors. There are several that runs through District Four, Astor Road, Powder Springs, Mabelton, Veterans Memorial, just as a few. Powder Springs, it's very landlocked. I lived in Powder Springs for 13 years, and it's very landlocked. It's a great place to be, it's a great place to live, but it's no easy way really to get out of Powder Springs. I understand that Mayor Thurman is doing, he's doing an incredible job in enhancing the city of Powder Springs, but there is really no easy way to access it. So as we talk about BRT and LRT options, Powder Springs, that area can really use a bump for those type of options, and also to reduce the commuter time. The same thing with Mabelton Parkway and VMA. Now, Mabelton Parkway, we may need to give a little bit of thought to, because we have a recent project there that I don't want to see destroyed, but some options along Mabelton Parkway, and also for Veterans Memorial, where Veterans Memorial can connect to the Fulton County line, which will also give you access to the new Microsoft complex. So all of those things, the overall goal, again, in transportation and transit, is to enhance and improve our quality through life, and that's done through connectivity. What I'll also add is that transportation and transit is not going to look the same throughout the entire county. And Drew, I, you know, I've shared this with you more times than you probably want to admit, or I want to admit. But fulfilling transportation needs in District Four will look very different from District One. But we need to, we need to make sure that we're exploring all of the options. What transportation or transit options would benefit residents in District One? When we talk about some of the cities in Kennesaw, perhaps maybe, you know, a router bus or something along those lines, or more trail options, where in District Four, we may increase the frequency of the bus. I guess the point that I'm making is, whatever decision we make, and I'm sure the board is prudent, and, you know, we're all on the same page here, is that it will look different, but it's important to me that each part of Cobb County obviously will benefit as much as anybody else in the county. And I think that we all agree to it. But just going back to the start of my comments, and as a board, we need to decide on whether or not we are going to move forward with best practices or emerging practices. And for me, after giving it a lot of thought, having, you know, countless meetings and doing my own independent research, then I can share with everyone that I am in support of 930. I think it is incumbent upon us to frame out what the next 30 years is going to look like, or 30 to 50 years are going to look like in Cobb County. So we have been tasked with that, and I believe that we will come to an agreement that all can get behind and be satisfied with. But, Madam Chair, if I may, at this time, have Drew to come up. And Drew, if you can just talk a little bit about the 30-year option, because...
Absolutely, be glad to. The legislature in 2019 passed House Bill 930. That includes a lot of the same provisions of 170. In terms of how projects were selected, there were some additional steps in terms of making sure that any transit projects that were done under this bill were done in coordination with the Atlanta Transit Link Authority, the ATL, and that meet the goals of the Atlanta Region Transit Plan, to make sure that regionalism was a value that was espoused in any of the referenda that came forward. But in looking at that, five years for transit can build some capital projects, but it can't operate it. And what we see from the smallest of systems to the largest of systems throughout the country, and think of even the premier systems in Boston, New York, and Washington DC, they're not fully supported by revenue that comes from ridership. They're supported through local taxes, they're supported through the Federal Transit Authority, they're also supported through ridership and Fairbox Recovery. But it really is a combination of all of that. So as the legislature looked at the ability for a transit referendum to be successful, not just in the ballot box, but over the life of a community, that longer term was deemed necessary to give the option to local governments to look at that full picture of capital and operating. And generally, what we would see in any of the models, whether there's bonding on it or if it's a pay-as-you-go, any of the models that we looked at, and any of the scenarios that you all have seen a number of times, there's a shift throughout the program in terms of what the revenues collected from SLOSS would go towards. And generally, what we see is, in Year One, something order of magnitude of 20% to 25% going towards operating, and then the remainder, 70% to 75% being able to go towards capital. And then, as you build more and more and more throughout the community, the need to operate more, because we go from the system that we have now to the future state, the future system that we're building out, as those come online, we begin to operate those. And so we see those operating costs grow as the capital has been built. And so we, generally, the model, what the model shows is that it shifts over time, and it provides that sustainability that a project that's built today can be operated tomorrow. The other facet of a 30-year is competitiveness with federal grants. Again, we see throughout the country, major transit investments, nearly all are supported by the Federal Transit Administration. And in order to be competitive for those funds, a sustainable operating funding source on the back end is something that adds to that competitiveness for those grants.
And just in the spirit of fairness, if you would, give some time to House Bill 170, and just talk a little bit about that as well.
Of course. The history on that, in 2012, there was the initial referendum, the regional T-SLOSS referendum, that failed in metro Atlanta, but passed in other areas of the state. And there was a recognition at that time, so if we think back to 2012, the state and the country were coming out of a recession, people were going back to more, we were seeing more and more congestion on our roadway networks. There was a need to invest in the transportation network that hasn't been done before. Georgia historically has under-invested compared to our comparable states throughout the country. And so there was a recognition at the state level, we need to do more. And that's where the idea of the regional T-SLOSS came from in 2012. It did fail, and there are a number of reasons for that. But coming out of that, there was some thinking about, well, why not give this control to the specific counties to identify, with some guardrails that say a certain percentage have to go towards the statewide transportation plan, that there is still some regional thinking, some regionally significant projects, but give that control to the counties for that. And in 2014, House Bill 170 passed, it didn't only include a single-county transportation referendum option, it also included a lot of other state funding mechanisms, including a shift in the way gas tax was collected. It increased the amount of funding for GDOT as well, but it also gave counties this option for an up to 1%, up to five-year transportation capital program. Since that time, we've seen the county, the county most close to us that has passed that is Fulton County. And a number of the cities were able to do a lot of transportation improvements through that, and it's actually been renewed. Athens-Cart County is another. There are a few other counties throughout that have taken advantage of that since, so 170 has passed in a number of counties. 930 has only been tried in Gwinnett County, and it's a referendum that failed very narrowly just a couple of years ago. very narrowly just a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. Sitting here listening to all of you makes me wish that we would have started before where we are right now. And I think this work session reflects the importance of the thought leadership of this board. This board consists of the policymakers of this county. And I think a lot of the stress and the pressure getting to this point was there not being that opportunity just to share what's the vision or thoughts or interest of the commissioners? We just kept trying to shoehorn that into something that had already left sale. And I don't think we've all had this opportunity to hear from each other what our interests are. And even, you know, this extends beyond 170 or 930, but even thinking about the comprehensive transportation plan, when I think of how vast Commissioner Richardson's list were, you know, she's speaking about elements of a really broad transportation future. And even beyond that, I, you know, because transportation dovetails into so many other things and hearing Commissioner Garmble talk about housing and, you know, hearing Commissioner Richardson bring up matters like the arts and military bases as you're talking about transportation reflects just how large of a subject this is and how large matters desire, large matters should be met with significant opportunity to hear from the thought leadership of this county. And so not just for this matter, but it makes me think when we have other significant matters, we just need this time just for us to just share where our thoughts are regarding significant issues. This is a significant issue that's before us and there were some things that I captured from each commissioner that may be worth considering. And as I share what are some significant thoughts are that I captured, if I've gotten any of them incorrect, please let me know because I'm not trying to misinterpret when anybody share. But in listening to Commissioner Garmble, I heard very strongly that mass transit is not desired in West Cobb. And even though she recognizes that, I think she's still a sensitive to the transportation impacts that development has in West Cobb, but has around West Cobb. She talked about Paulding County, so hearing from what adjacent counties has a similar thought that I heard, not just from her, but from other commissioners, making sure we have a regional consideration in how we're addressing transit. I think Commissioner Garmble has a lot of appreciation and respect for the work that our transportation staff does to assess what our transportation needs and options are. So I think for her, it's important to hear the voice and feedback of the transportation staff as we move forward. But I think maybe, I don't know if you are identifying control, is it, I think you were articulating that you're interested in us having control of the funding over time? Or were you just stating that you desire to know if we do have control of the funds?
That was one of the concerns of my TAB representatives is if we could keep maintaining control of the funds and then contract out to
Okay.
the ATL.
Okay.
Instead of just turning the funds over to the ATL. And I will let Drew answer that if you want.
If there's something, yeah, please.
The technical answer to that.
Just, it, it could be a presentation in and of itself. The question of transit operators, so the Cobb County is, is one of the original MARTA counties and, and has had the option for, for years to, to join and, and as a, as a MARTA board member county. That, that, given that it has been a number of years, that, that is a, a consideration that this board could, could direct staff to, to, to work through that potential process. Clayton County is the most recent to go through that. That comes forward in the form of a contract where the county negotiates a contract with MARTA, but it, it does become a part of a very broad system. So, so with that, there, there's advantages to the regional connectedness that comes there, but there's also a, a change where instead of the, the funds being collected, controlled, delivered by the county and the county board of commissioners, those, those funds fall under a, a larger, a larger MARTA board that has interest throughout all of metro Atlanta and neither being better, better or worse than the other, just, just different. What, what 930 allows is for counties to be able to directly control the funds that are collected and then determine the, the best means and methods to, to deliver on those funds. And it, it was an element of Gwinnett's plan where, where they were looking to contract some services to, to MARTA, but by state law, MARTA has to be the carrier of, an operator of, of heavy rail, for example. So it, it's something that can be worked through a number of different avenues, but it, it is an option for the county to collect and manage funds under a 930 and to contract then with MARTA for either limited or more full services as a transit operator.
So overall, I'm hearing that the county does have the opportunity to still control those funds and determine how they could move forward with MARTA should the board desire for us to consider that option?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Drew, for sharing that with us. Then lastly, I captured a point from Commissioner Garmble is taking advantage of opportunities to leverage what's in the Biden's package or Biden administration's package. And that, that package has a lot of grant opportunities for transit, but also for other issues like affordable housing. And I know from sitting on the board of the ARC that they did a comprehensive overview to the board members about the grants that are in that package. And I think there could be an opportunity to have a similar presentation for the commissioners so we're aware of how we can take advantage of all the programs within, within the federal transit package. District Two, I cannot capture all the points that were shared in that rather comprehensive presentation, but I appreciated it for its comprehensiveness. And I think if we had the ability to start at day one, before we kicked off that CTP, we could have really been transformative with some of the considerations that we included in that. And I don't know, similar to our work with the comprehensive plan, if there are opportunities to make updates to that along the way, but I think in light of what was shared here today, we should explore whether or not those options are available to us to make sure that we are not missing out on opportunity to be transformative. And maybe similar to Commissioner Garmble, you know, Commissioner Richardson shared a lot of aspects in a community that are tied to transportation and tied to transit that could be enhanced through our efforts. You know, I would never have thought to, sitting in a transportation meeting, we talk about our military base and just how we can provide better connectedness to those that are serving there and how that can really help to galvanize some maybe untapped support for a transportation initiative. Even reflecting on topics like the arts and how that could be enhanced through transportation is something worth considering. But we tend to sometimes compartmentalize some of these considerations, even in some of the environmental interests that she shared, reducing our carbon footprint. I know we have efforts in fleet and efforts in KCB, but those can also dovetail into what's going on with our transit division. Similar to Commissioner Garmble, Commissioner Richardson desired us to look at what's going on in the counties around us and not just in the counties around us, but within the commercial centers within Cobb. And that's something that was shared by Commissioner Sheffield as well. Those are job centers. And we look at Cumberland area, it's a top job center, not just of Cobb County, but really of our state. And it's a misfortune that we are not providing direct connectivity to that area, not only for its employment opportunity, but also for its recreational opportunity that we have there with the Braves. And so I think that's an area that we should really look to enhance with the effort moving forward. Commissioner Richardson talked about not just opportunities in our commercial centers, but also within our suburban areas, looking at suburban safety. And Commissioner Sheffield spoke about pedestrian safety and the demand for sidewalks. And I know Commissioner Burl and I used to go back and forth on who was, who was the greatest sidewalk queen, you know, her or, or me. And I think that's a continuing theme of interest in our county. Everybody wants sidewalk. Everybody wants to walk safely and get to places safely. So it'd be interesting to see how we can capture that through our programs. Equity was something that was addressed through Commissioner Richardson's discussion. And even I would think in part with District One, I think Commissioner Garmble recognizes, you know, that there's some parts of the county that are more transit dependent. This may look different in some areas, recognizing that even District One is not homogeneous. There's some parts of our district that may not quote unquote be West Cobb, where there could be opportunity. And so I think the board is looking at having a lot of flexibility throughout the county with what is put forward. And that was reflected in all the analyses that you showed us even prior to, today. I like seeing complete streets that Commissioner Richardson had. That's not something that started with this board. It really started, I think, back in 2005. I saw a complete streets study of our county and it's something we haven't activated yet. And I think just for the sidewalk plan of that, it would be about a $750 million investment. And if we don't start tackling that, that now, it'll just, that number will just grow to the extent that we're not tackling it, could be to the extent that we're not keeping pedestrians safe on our roadways. Commissioner Richardson also spoke about freight as well, and I know freight movement in our county is pretty significant to our economy. We have some industrial areas that rely on movement of freight, but also movement of freight's important just throughout the state. We think about our port in Savannah and activity near the airport. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I did not capture everything, but something that Commissioner Richardson did have an interest in was looking at the pros and cons of the different options and, and looking at potentially at M-SPOSS plus, I'll call it, yes, looking at 930, but what are all the other funding options and what can they do to help us accomplish this larger vision of what we perceive transportation should look like for the county for here and to the future? And, you know, transport, or M-SPOSS plus, it includes T-SPOSS, but also includes our current SPOSS program, any RAP, Revenue Above Projections that we have that can go towards, you know, federal and state batch. And then again, we spoke about the federal dollars through the IJAA or the federal plan. Okay, leading to District Three, Commissioner Burl. I think there was some recognition that there could be some transportation opportunities in some parts of the county versus others. I think she recognizes that in East Cobb, there certainly could be more options than there may be in West Cobb. And she particularly...
Specifically just Canton Road, not East Cobb.
I was going to say Canton Road. Yes, I had here, got a sentence before, but I had here highlighted Canton Road specifically. And she is not in support of a 30-year tax. So I think if there is a bar for her, it's, that's a cutoff. And not interested in seeing an eight cents sales tax levy. Think there's a stronger leaning for the T-SPOSS, which can go for a maximum of five years. And, let's see, even considerations for a fraction of a penny versus a full penny. And the mode to Commissioner Burl is very important to, to understand what that looks like. Okay, and then Commissioner Sheffield, I, I gravitated to her observation of best practices versus emerging practices. And if we have opportunity to look into the future, us trying to do the best for what's here today may not get us to where we need to be in the future. And I think about my family, which comes from an automotive, you know, family, and my dad used to always talk about how great the buggy whip was until the car came along. And you could have really designed the heck out of that buggy whip, but it's just, it's no, it's, it's no long, but he would say this just to impress upon me that things are always moving forward and you could be trying to perfect what's here today when it has no relevance for what tomorrow may bring. And sometimes I think we are looking back sometimes and thinking of what Cobb is today and trying to perfect that. But the Cobb here today, we want to make sure the great things about Cobb, which is Cobb's greatness, can be sustained in the future. And so having the ability to think openly and to think about the people beyond us is critical. I think Warren Buffett has a, you know, quote saying, somebody's sitting under the shade of a tree because somebody planted it years ago. And it's our thoughts that are going to be able to create that place and space for someone if we can just be open enough to do it. And, you know, there are communities that are reaping the benefit of tying into transportation from that MARTA Act that was created and potentially have the ability to leverage that. And, and so I think just as some people are visionary, then we can be visionary for this county. And, and again, not just when it comes to transit, but all of our transportation options. Sidewalks, again, very important. I think whatever we do has got to include sidewalks in it. There's a lot of interest in people's two feet, getting people from point A to point B. Something that dovetail, I think with what Commissioner Richardson highlighted, just the significance of utilizing our systems to support education, employment and recreation. Cobb is a great tourism destination, but recognizably 80% of our riders today are utilizing our system for education and employment. And it's not just, well, I won't say just anything. We have some great employment and education centers here in Cobb County. We have KSU, you know, we have Chattahoochee Tech, we have the Cumberland area, we also have the Town Center area, we have an industrial area, we also have amenities like Six Flags, we have the Battery. We have so many assets in our county, but they're also assets around our county. You think about the lift that could potentially come to District Four from the Microsoft Center. She talks about the connectedness to the airport. These are things that we can't ignore in whatever plan moves forward. Also, she was interested in the regional centers here in the county of Bus Circulator. To me, makes a lot of sense to the Cumberland area. So I think it's a lot of food for thought, Drew, but, you know, as far as what the opportunities are for us in 2024, from listening to everyone, I think there is some interest in investing in transportation. And I think, you know, you know, I've already shared my perspective on this and I think there is an appetite from a majority of the board to consider 930 and to explore what that looks like. But I think there's also a desire to look beyond just the transit piece of that. And I think that there's got to be some way to not just even think transit, but look at transportation options and not just for today, but in the future. So if there's some way to open up that CTP discussion and start enhancing, you know, what some opportunities are, similar to what we do for the comprehensive plan on an annual basis, maybe there's some way to start considering how we can tweak some things so that we don't miss out on leveraging the ideas of, of the commissioners as they come on board. Because that plan is put forward every five years, we elect commissioners, hopefully reelect commissioners every four years, but there should be some way to feed into our plans and not having to wait until something big comes up. I didn't hear 170 necessarily ruled out. I think there's opportunity to consider transformation with what can come from a 30-year investment. But again, I... But again, I think, you know, that 170 is like that safety net, that catchall that can catch the other transportation options that I'm hearing. But even sitting in the commissioner discussions with you over the past few weeks, I think there are other funding opportunities. If it's not 170, it could be our S P L O S. It could be what comes out of the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. It could be some other funding sources that are already available. It's just not made very clear as to how we leverage those things to get to some of these other aspects of transportation. So I hate to kind of, I feel like I'm just trying to move forward and going backward at the same time, as I think there is the ability to move forward for 2024, again, for 930. But I also think there has to be some consideration for these other aspects of transportation and these other issues that touch transportation, from what I'm hearing. With the considerations and concerns or constraining thoughts that have been shared, there, you know, for some, it's okay to be visionary and to be thinking about emerging thoughts, but, you know, for Commissioner Burl's, a very real thought about what those, what some limits or constraints should be. And so I think we can try to be sensitive and consider that as we go along as well. Well, that's what I have, Commissioners. Just thank you for this. I really feel like, even though it's kind of painful getting to this meeting, even preparing for it, I think when we do have big issues, man, this is a good venue for us to talk about these things, to just listen and to distill things and then to have staff help us once you hear what our interests are as a board. So yes, Commissioner Gambrell. Yes, if we can go back through and let anybody clear up or share any additional thoughts.
In your summary, and I know I touched on it just very lightly, because I do have three cities that touch the outer boundaries of my district. So while I didn't discuss their transit concerns, because we haven't had those concerns, so I haven't addressed them. So that is something that I also need to take into consideration. And I know everybody knows I don't like the empty buses, but we do have buses routes up there. So again, those are something that need to be looked at. But we need to partner with, I know, I want to partner with my three cities before I make a decision going forward.
Certainly.
Drew, I'm gonna put you on the spot, please. So it was brought up about possibly having to modify the CTP. In my discussions with you, the CTP is kind of like the big overall plan. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't proceed on a different plan without updating the CTP. Is that correct?
The CTP is a, it has all those really cool charts that I had came from the CTP. So it identifies where we've been, what are those transportation pressures, and then some potential tools to address them. But what I've heard today is more about how the board would like to address those. And so what I would suggest as the next steps is that we look at those priorities that have been discussed today and look at how the CTP can address those needs. And if there are any gaps, to be very open with what those gaps are and look at how we can address those. But to see what tools are already identified there and can meet the desires and vision of the board.
So, because my only concern is if we go back and start with the CTP again, we're not going to be any farther than we are today. So I would kind of like to have a storyboard, because I know Commissioner Richardson and I have had many conversations, but almost start with the county storyboard and take some of the options. Because I know when I met with you on the 30-year plan and the five-year plan, there were things that I liked about both and there were things I didn't like about both. But maybe bring that storyboard out and have us sit down and say, okay, where can we agree on? And kind of start to draw it out and then see how we can tie into potential leveraging our existing rail line and things as such. And I think we could probably do that with the framework that we've got with the CTP. Because again, in the CTP, there were three or four different scenarios? Three, four?
Well, there are scenarios in the CTP and there's scenarios that we, we have a lot of scenarios.
We do have a lot of scenarios. We have got so much information. We have got information overload. So I would almost like to see us sit down in a public forum like this and again, kind of play out a storyboard with the existing infrastructure that we have, knowing what projects that our DOT and our staff consultants have put together and then say, okay, how can we start bringing this together, addressing the concerns that each of us have brought to the table? And again, I would like to see the six cities involved as well, because I know my three mayors have a different perspective than I do. So let's look at possibly doing something like that and make it more interactive. And then, and then again, we could go...
Yeah. One Commissioner, one Commissioner at a time.
My Gorilla Glue and duct tape is still holding. So, but I would like to, because again, staff has all those costs. So even, you know, Commissioner Richardson has a big, big plan in place. So how do we lay that out, incorporate the other plans, and then start costing it from there and then saying, okay, get it back down to where it's feasible for the constituents to understand the benefit of still being in the emergency practices and how it could benefit them? Because a lot of people are visual, so to sit there and talk about things, you know, they're always going to say, yes, we want more sidewalks. Because you're right, everybody wants more sidewalks, and I understand that. But maybe if we painted a different vision of how we're going to change transportation to help them get the mobility, it would be easier if we did it in a storyboard type of a setting.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've had so many community events where they've had that visualization activity, but this board really has not sat down and done that, to jumpstart that. And it would be a very unique public meeting, but it certainly could be one and, you know, bring in other leaders. Where we kind of put to paper, you know, we get our sticky notes and we write our desires and our dreams and put it on a map and show what things can look like over time. I think that's a great idea. And I'm sure we can work with our communication staff and DOT and our clerk's office to see how we can facilitate it, but why not? Why not? Yeah. Yes.
And also, just for the record, a lot of the things that I have pointed out have a lot of elements in the CTP. There really isn't that much that's new, it's more so how it's framed and what it's tied to. So, and the other thing, just to make sure, the point of laying out kind of the whole view of that is not, okay, we need to have enough money to do all of that in 30 years. The idea is, that's, that would be the general direction. Here are the problems, here are the needs, what do we want to accomplish? And what can we build towards accomplishing that in a way that's wise with our resources?
We have to start somewhere.
Amen.
It's a great, I think it's, provides us great opportunity to do that. Commissioner Burl, yeah?
Just for the record, at the end of the day, it will be a referendum for the voters to decide. But our position is to get it to a referendum for the voters to decide. So we may be making all the decisions as to what that referendum will look like, but it will be up to the voters to decide whether they want it or not.
Amen.
And I'll just add to that end, although it's going to be up to the voters, a lot will still depend on how we as a board get behind our decision and how it's packaged and how it's presented to the public. So that's going to be, that's going to be very important and very key in how we, I don't want to say sell, because we're not selling anything, but how we can break it down to the level where people understand the benefit, whether it's 30 years or whatever we decide to come up with. It's going to be how we market it, and we need to believe in our product. Whatever it is that we are going to present to the community, we need to make sure that we believe in what we are offering. Because the overall goal, regardless of what district you represent, the overall goal is to, is to enhance the life of people in Cobb County. And we may all go about it a different way, but I think overall, that's what we are all attempting to do. So we just need to figure out how to get there collectively.
And just to be clear, we're educating, educating.
Educating.
We're educating.
Not marketing and advocating.
We will, you know, whatever, but we are trying to be responsive to the needs that we have heard from members of our community, our respective communities. And kudos on the great recap.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield asked me what my perspective was on this, and I think I've shared it so many times, it was important for me to really listen and be able to distill the voices of the commissioners and see how we collectively move forward. Shared this in, you know, my State of the County address. I can see a vision of where Cobb County can be to leverage this opportunity and to create a remarkable future that ensures us being a premier county for this state and even for this country. But I only gets us so far. It's got to be a we thing. And so I'm grateful, again, that we had this opportunity to see how we can move forward together. And as this advances, I'm sure my interests will shine forth as your interests shine forth. I want the whole county to succeed. And there's nothing that was shared here today that I can't perceive myself trying to understand and get behind to see how that helps to move the county forward. For me, I'm all about everybody included in Cobb, and I think when you have a big vision to include everyone, it means taking big action and being thoughtful about not just today, but tomorrow. And so I just want to thank everybody for this exercise. Drew, I look forward to talking with you after today to see what comes out of this. We're talking, there's also a Transit Advisory Board that also means that we appoint people to that, and hopefully they'll have the opportunity to let their voices be known and to also hear the feedback of this board. But I think no matter what we do, if we are listening and then taking what we hear and moving something forward, we'll have a much better chance moving forward than we have had in the past. With that, thank you, everyone, for your time. Commissioners, we do have an executive session at 3:30 today. And so I would like to formally adjourn this work session and ask for a motion to go into exec.
Seven minutes. Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? I'll call the questions, excuse me. The motion carries 5-0. I'll see everybody upstairs at 3:30. Thank you.